Okay, let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. And we want to certainly thank everyone for coming tonight, all the guests. We appreciate you being here. And I have several things on the agenda tonight. We will go through these as we come along. Once again, thank you for being here. We're gonna have our pledge of allegiance, and then Mr. Ed House is gonna have his invocation. I'm gonna ask Lynn Mitchell P. Woodley to send our pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as far.
Pledge of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for a country where we can vote with freedom and liberty. We pray that you'd be with us as we as a country to start to make decisions. We know that we are a restless people, that we are wishing to have a new leadership, Father, that is fair and kind, and that can take away the bitterness and the vicarion, and come to decisions and come to conclusions. Father, we pray that on all levels that we would make those type of decisions, and that we have government that would be of the people, by the people, and for the people. And that we would all work together in your goodness and in your spirit. We pray these things in Christ's name, amen. First time on the agenda tonight is approval minutes from our meeting dated 1916. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I have a motion.
Okay, Tim, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, great. Holland Faires, yeah?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Number two is a recommendation to approve our county's payable bills for January. Is there a motion to approve those county's payable bills?
I have a motion.
Okay, great. Is there a second? Okay, Tim, thank you. Holland Faires, yeah?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. This time, we have a presentation of Ms. Rachel from Safe Place along with a request to use one of the rooms at the City Hall. We've been talking for the last probably couple of months, and there's a great need for a room like this or an office that they could have in our City Hall if the council's okay with domestic violence. There's a big need for it in our county. And I'm gonna let y'all come and just make a presentation to the council and tell us when you're here and what your request is for, if you don't mind. Just kind of fill us out on what this is about, because this is the first time that I've ever seen this, so there's...
Please, welcome.
Just right up here, stop.
Thanks, Mrs. Woodley.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rachel Packworth. I'm the director at Safe Place, and as you know, Safe Place serves Marion County. This is Kiera Vickery. She is the co-chair of the Marion County Domestic Violence Task Force and also the director of Marion County DHR. We've worked very closely together for many years, and with the task force, the Marion County Domestic Violence Task Force has certainly been an extension of Safe Place services. We've really grown Safe Place services in Marion County, and we've sought extra resources so that we can have an outreach office here. We have an outreach office in Lawrence County, one in Franklin County, and one in Lauderdale County in our six county service area. And so what we're asking for is, we understand that y'all are moving, and so we're looking for donated office space where we would pay for our own telephone that we can use for our advocates to operate out of, where people from the community can, from Marion and Winston Counties would come to seek our services and help. It would give us an opportunity to connect them to all of the resources that Safe Place has.
And is this, would this be just an office you need every day, or you need a civic office lined up?
Right. We're just looking for a designated space that we would, you know, I think we can get some donated office furniture. And it's really been, all of the outreach offices that we have are donated spaces. It's the way that we've been able to grow our services and reach people. It's made such a huge difference to... We've had staff in this, in Marion and Winston County for many years. We've added an additional staff person specifically to serve this area, so just within this last, in the last couple of months. And so we're very excited about the possibilities.
So somewhere would land the phone and that office?
Correct.
What, five days a week?
Five days a week. They would be here, I mean, when they were, when they're gone is when they're in court. So we advocate on behalf of victims in court, and when they're seeking protection from abuse orders, that type of thing. But otherwise, they would be in the office and would have, you know, normal, what's normal, right? Normal working hours.
I know that, you know, Mrs. Quinn supports Safe Place a lot, and Karen, you're extremely fortunate to have her working with you, because she is not, every time you turn around, Karen's doing some stuff.
Thank you. And we do, we try to spread the awareness, you know, the Domestic Violence Task Force, that's kind of our goal, is to make people aware of the services. But having an office local here would make those services so much more accessible.
It's used a lot, isn't it?
It's more than most people know. Yes, ma'am.
When you have other offices, you're not paying or renting anything there either. Most of them are done.
They all are. They even offer, I don't know if this is a possibility, but while I'm asking, they even offer internet service, so we use their internet service, and then the thing that we pay for is our, is a telephone.
Or you need kind of lease for these offices, or they just, it's just month to month, or just understanding that it's yours to use?
We've done, the way that we've, all of our other ones are, we've done memorandums of understanding, just, you know, but, and I've been at Safe Place almost 10 years, and those offices, some of those offices have been in existence for probably 20 years, and we've never had any kind of problems. We're good papers.
I know you've been an asset to our city, having a place for people to come. It's sad that they have to have a place like that to come. But that would be something that, if they had a place designated, that would be, you know, I think it's a great idea, you know?
You are asking for a space in this building?
Yes.
Yes.
What I had in mind, council, was where the cable office is, I believe, where there are now. That should be a place that you could have, you could bring people in, have a, you know, private area where it's not accessed, you keep the doors locked easily, and, you know, because once we get, it may be a few months, may not be a few months, but, well, do you have a timeline or whatever available, as soon as you can get something?
Yeah, as soon as we can get something, we, like I said, we've already hired staff. Our staff person is working out of the Franklin County office, and so it's just not as accessible to our Marion County folks.
The Marion County folks has to go somewhere else right now.
At this point, right. They, you know, they either go all the way to Franklin County, or they're available when the advocates here in Marion County in court, or can meet them somewhere.
And it's small. Is there any requirement of size, or, I mean, that's big enough, I guess, if you have to provide a service and make persons?
We'll make another, another one once we get, you know...
We'll be very grateful to take what space we can, y'all can be able to offer. We'd be very grateful.
Well, it's smaller than just one, maybe it goes back a couple of houses.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay. Yeah, turn, um, correct.
Scotty, if we were to do this, what would be appropriate way to word it or vote on it, or take any action?
We would need to vote on it to allow it, and we can work out the memorandum of understanding with Safe Place and get things in place, like probably pretty similar to what they're having in Franklin County, where we're having that, so just get that in place. We can go ahead and approve the project and then the subject. But I guess we're gonna give them that, rent that space.
He's liable to be on, it's good.
No, we can adapt to them, right?
Do we have internet that there is access? Do we have Wi-Fi? Do we...
We have, we do have internet, don't we, Hansel? That we use, if possible, if not, if that were not available, would it be a burden for you to get it?
We go scrounging, we do it well.
That's the only thing I have a question on. Is possible that we could have internet available for you? Definitely, you know, water and power is already here anyway, so that wouldn't be a problem. And, you know, access to the, wouldn't be a problem when you have your meetings, I've already asked about, when you have meetings with groups, we can definitely use the co-council chambers down there or in here at certain times. So that would be a problem. The only thing might be the internet. That might be the only question, but that might can be resolved, too.
It'd be great if it could, and if it can't, we'll find a way.
Well, we see if we can. It's here anyway, the places will still be here, and courts still be here. Okay. Does the council, do we have a vote in approval tonight based on, I remember a random, like Scott says?
I'm good with it. I'm like, I'm ready to do it.
I'll say. Greg's made a motion. Lena, second. Any other discussion? Holland Faires, yeah? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll get Scott to word it the way it needs to be, and then get back to you about the memorandum of understanding.
All right, sounds great. Thank you all so much.
Appreciate you being here. At this time, we have a recommendation for the City of Hamilton to renew its municipal membership with IRVAC life team. This actually doesn't come up until like the first week of March, but if we either don't do it tonight, I do it at the next meeting, so we want to ahead and put them here in front of the night when it comes back up. I think it's been something that's been pretty successful, and I'm personally, I'm glad we did it. There was somebody in the office, Hunter's office, one day last week, or the week before, that actually had to have an IRVAC, no insurance, $37,000, and didn't cost her anything. And that's something that we provided, well, like Tim said, when we first started this, that actually affects the whole city. And it does cost a little bit, but we built it in our budget. I want to ahead and put it in our budget for this year to be covered, just in case we did do it. Do we know how many? Third, Wade, did you tell me, tell me what you said when I come in here this year?
In 2015, there were 34 flats between Muscle Sho and Fayette. They were combined out of this area.
Can you, am I having any local right here? I know there's been...
I don't, I don't know, it's, it's for the Hamilton area.
Yeah.
34.
Oh, Wade, the $35, I think you told me, that that's kind of a universal fee, right? Since we're in Hamilton, and it doesn't cost anyone anything.
Right.
The $35 will cover you outside the Hamilton area.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because I had been asked.
That $35, that's your value.
Pardon?
Anywhere that you go out of Hamilton, or, you know, the $35, that's what it takes for that.
Anywhere that they have an area.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much across the state. You're right.
Yeah, yeah.
Wherever IRVAC is located, which is pretty widespread, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, and they're getting more, you know, more and more all the time.
Okay. Wade, would there be a motion to go ahead and approve this renewal?
I have a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Holland Faires, yeah? Thank you all very much. I'm gonna skip around just a second, but number five and six may take a little while. That's with Andrea on both projects, and that can take more than a few minutes. So I'm gonna go down to number nine and then move back up. Tony, would you place, we have a recommendation to waive all business license for all the vendors who participate in Jerry Brown Arts Festival. This is something we do each year, and if you want, give us a word about when the festival is and where it is, and this is usually just a formality, but it still has to be going on.
Sure. Little handout here on the festival this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Colonel, for allowing me to speak tonight. Jerry Brown Arts Festival really is a community-driven event, and we've got people of all ages and all organizations that come out participating in it, and they're really the unsung heroes, the 30-plus volunteers that give up part of their weekend every year to bring this festival to Hamilton. And last year, the festival attracted thousands of people to the Hamilton area, and we hope that this year it will be a success, also, and we can bring more than that in. So it's gonna be Saturday, March the 5th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Sunday, March the 6th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's gonna be located inside the Tom Bibby Electric Cooperative Building. That's at exit 14, I-22, underneath the Water Tower in Hamilton, Alabama. There's no charge for admission. It's one of the Southeast Tourism Society's top 20 events in 2016. We'll have 60-plus article, 60-plus artists from five states who've participated in this Jerry Arts Festival. There'll be artists from Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, Georgia, and North Carolina. Host artists, Jerry and Sandra Brown, as everybody knows. And some of the returning artists from Best in Show winners is Deborah Farley, this was 2015 Deborah Farley with Jewelry in Pelham, Alabama. 2013 and 2014 Craig and Tracy Wilson, Pottery, Blue Springs, Mississippi. 2009 Dennis Brown Pottery in Sunlake, Mississippi. 2008 Daniel Lindell, fiber artist from Amory, Mississippi. And 2004 Maurice Cook, painter from Hoovero, Alabama. We'll also have T-shirts this year. They'll be from Brian Bohannon, who's a folk artist from Alina, Alabama. And so that's kind of a wrap-up on everything. We'd also like to make the request that one of the biggest problems we have, the location is a wonderful location, but the parking is all along that road that leads out to Industrial Park. So last year, around 1 o'clock or so on Saturday afternoon, you had about a quarter-mile hike to get out to the end of that, end of that road. So we would like to request that, I know the City of Hamilton has that new van, and if it's possible, we would like to be able to use it as to transport people back and forth along that roadway. We would mandate only with arts council members.
I think that would be perfectly fine. That's more than ours. Okay. Very well, what was given us, so that's, that's one of the uses, that would be something I think we justify, something like that. Looks like new members, new exhibit this year is the Hamilton Senior Center, looks like.
Yeah, there's gonna be several new examples. I didn't know how far, I didn't want to spend a lot of your time on there, because I know you've got a busy, a busy schedule tonight. But yeah, many of the artists are demonstrating. I know one year, there was a lady there that I'd never seen yarn spun, and she was actually spinning yarn right there out of a papua fir. And that was just real fascinating. So there's a lot of stuff in addition to, you want to bring the children or family out, that you can actually learn about, it's one of the few things that have that. And many of the artists will make custom pieces for you or your family, your churches. And then we're gonna have the Hamilton Senior Center out there this year. We're gonna have the art station that's sponsored by Beverly Community College. We're gonna have a molded hearts and hands display, pottery display from students from the Hamilton Christian Academy. We're gonna have a photographic display, which we usually have 30, 40 photographs that's from this area, from the Image Masters, which is the local photo club. And then, of course, there'll be food and other vendors there for drinks and all. And then, on Facebook, you can find us at Jerry Brown Arts Festival, and the website is www.jvaf.org. So any questions or thoughts on the festival?
Excited about it. Glad we got to use a Tom Bibby building again. Gracious, after last do that.
Yeah, that was a, that's the best lighting we've had.
Hope the weather's good. The featured artist is Brian Bohannon. My wife's back there, and we've bought one of his pieces almost every year. We got several, and several of his others, too, so we're big fans of this, and I know the council does, too, several volunteers there every year, and a lot of people go. We're very excited, and thank you for all you do, and all the arts council. It takes a lot of work behind the scenes to make this happen. It don't just happen. You know, hours and months and months of planning to put this together, so it's very much appreciated. And I thank you very much, and I know the council does, too, they will say that, yes, in time now they can do it.
It just gets bigger and bigger.
Well, thank you, I'll be done.
All right. Would there be a motion to approve this recommendation? I'll motion. That you go ahead? Yes. Right, just a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
We have to provide this doodle, I'm sure, to drive the van?
They can, they can, they sellers can drive it, and get the money. Yes, yeah. Before that, okay. We can do that.
So what you need from Tony, at least the person driving?
Probably. Would that what we need, Scott?
Copy if they're...
We can do that the next meeting. We are popular, who's gonna be responsible for driving? You can do that for us?
Sure.
And actually, by the way, we won't meet two weeks from tonight because it's a holiday, so it'll be on Tuesday. We'll meet on 16th, so if you'll get that to me, Tony, who's gonna be driving, and we'll get that to you, what information you need, we can get that approved the next meeting, because the following will be, I don't know, we might not have a chance before the next. I'm not sure when the next council meeting is, in March, but we'll get that done ahead of time. Okay. Need a second. Francis, second. Okay. Holland Faires, yeah? Thank you all very much. Let's back up in here just a second, we'll catch back up and read the agenda. I'm gonna go to number seven. We have a recommendation to post a mechanic job for the city of Hamilton Street Farm. Starting by paying for this job, particular job was 1440. If you've got anything to add, we've had one now for several weeks, a mechanic.
Yeah, possibly five weeks or so.
So we need, we need, and there's a lot that needs to be done. This could take another three or four weeks, so by the time we get this guy hired, we'll be at least two months without him.
Right.
All we're trying to do is replace an opening.
So are we gonna...
Your folks, go ahead.
Are we gonna post it within the CD first, or are we gonna post it within the CD at the same time?
Same time.
If you're posting mechanic job, then it's gonna be other duties, too, right?
That's right.
You need to put that in there, not just mechanic job.
Do we have a job description of what the other jobs are?
I don't, I don't know, so we'll put one together.
You gotta think we might have one, so there's no question that...
We can, we can do that. We can, we can post it, but yes, it would be within, within our CD and also outside the employment that we're currently have.
So y'all gonna come up with the job description first before you post it?
I don't think, I don't think we need to do that. I mean, I think we can have a job description done by the time we start in...
Well, you gonna have somebody certified, or?
You gonna certify what?
Mechanic.
Well, there's, there's a...
Well, they go to school for that. Some of you gonna...
We have had an application that one has already been to school, and there's other apps, like in the past, the mechanics we've had, there's just been, just mechanics, you know, they may not have an education in actual two-year certification or something.
But you got to know if they're mechanic for it.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we would. I don't think it's that difficult.
No, I don't, I don't.
I mean, I know what, I don't, from saying, I don't think...
I think that's part of the interview process, you determine who's...
People that put in will have to have some kind of experience, because I sure wouldn't make the mechanic. Most people wouldn't, you know, you'd have to have some kind of knowledge of motors and that's what we're gonna be able to...
Right.
There's the comparison.
Well, every interview, a lot of those stuff.
When y'all come up with one, the extra study is just put a copy of it in my box. If they're gonna, you know, if they're being hired as the mechanic, but they may have to ride the garbage truck, or they may have to pick up trash, or they may have to water the flowers.
All the above.
Yeah. So they're mechanic and everything else.
Right.
Okay.
That's only when there's no mechanic job to be...
Most of the time, I think we'd keep one pretty busy for this meeting, because we got a CD. But yes, the number one job would be that slash, whatever else we can add to the description.
Hold on, my motion.
Okay. Any, any, you got a second on this one?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? Holland Faires, yeah? Thank you very much. We have a recommendation to post and make us work for the job at the Hamilton Recreation Center. We also have an employee that's no longer with us that does, that was part routine maintenance every day, and we really need to replace this individual, because we're shorthanded.
Easy decisions, I'm out.
It's already upon us.
Do I go post it in the CD?
There could be someone within the CD who wants to transfer to this department, and if not, it'd still be open outside also, the same as we'll do the mechanic job. So would there be a motion to approve this recommendation?
I have a commission.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Holland Faires, yeah? Thank you very much. Hey, Miss Andrea, I'm gonna let you come forward, and you're a guest.
Mayor, Andrea, if it's okay, I don't really do, we need to do the shots vacation. I don't think it's on the agenda, we haven't clicked it, haven't noticed, 49. And I don't know if anyone is here on that.
But there may be some right there on...
We never got any inform, we getting information? If I had read the newspaper, I would've known. So I think we better tell us.
Recommendation to close, what's the name of that street's called?
It's, it goes by Shot Circle. That's shot, it's got the street signed up. It's off of Northern Streets, where Mr. Williams has the storage buildings on Dexter Avenue West, going towards Weston. It's a drive that basically cuts through, so it's family, their residence. It looks like a driveway. Like, when you first mentioned it to me, I drove out there, I thought it was a driveway. Basically, that's what they want, to keep it from being a public road, people can just drive through, cut through. I believe this Palmer has property in the front, in the front, basically Dexter Avenue. The road starts on the east side of this property, I think, and it cuts into the shots, it goes back to the side, comes out on, obviously, Northern Street, and then it comes on and out. It's maybe a quarter of a mile long, but it wouldn't cut access to anyone's property, but it would just keep that from being a public street.
Are you telling that the rape shots probably on the dotted western block?
Yes.
Just reading this... So what you're asking out there, so perhaps have a public hearing on this particular road before we take any action?
We, it's just had today. We put the notice in the newspaper to have it today to vacate that, and instead of, it was shots, dollars, requested that it be. And I don't know, there's somebody here.
Is there anybody here concerned with that particular road being closed?
Yes, sir. I actually own the property now, bought it from Palmer, and that would, the road is actually my property line, to the corner of it, from their driveway to my property line. It kind of makes a T right there. I have land back on the backside of, in Ray Thompson subdivision, and if they close that road off, you know, I'd have to come out to the main road, go out and get on the main road, come around to get some other property there. I really wouldn't want the road closed. I just want to kind of speak, you know, on my behalf. I do, I do actually own the property now, it's in my name.
If you don't mind, because I didn't think it would cut off access to your property.
No, it won't, it won't cut off access, but it would cut off, it won't cut off access totally, but it would cut off access on one side of my property. I can still access my property from the main road, but I would have to, from my property to having Ray Thompson subdivision, I would have to drive up to the main road, come back around. Come back around, get on the main road, and then, and turn back up into my property. And, and I, I use the drive to, to cut through and, uh, and, and access my property without getting on the main road.
That, that goes out on Northern, is it Northern Street?
It comes out on Northern Street, and, and it connects Northern Street and.
So you, what you're saying is, is that their house is on Bexar?
Their, my house is on Bexar.
Right.
Their house is on Northern Street.
Right. And so you go, use that street to cut through the back part of?
To come on the backside of my property.
Okay.
Does this street you're talking about go up the side from Shot's house? Oh, oh, the west side of her house, on out into that other side that goes out to Thompson's?
Yes, ma'am, it cuts, it cuts, uh, it cuts across. She has a concrete drive that goes up, if you go out there, she has a concrete drive that goes back up to the east to her house.
Right.
And, and the road that, that they're wanting to shut down, it cuts back out to the west and out to Northern Street, yes.
Is it actually a street?
I'm, I'm never not.
There's no sign?
There, there isn't a sign, and he actually keeps his truck and garbage cans parked, you know, in the roof there.
And basically, it's like, from Bexar Avenue back around, when Shot's property and cuts in behind your house, is that right?
Yes.
I tried to print one off, and I couldn't print one off.
I mean, I know what he's looking at, but, I mean, I know what it looks like. Where is your property on the backside? Once, if you turn your property off of.
When you come out on Northern.
Yeah. Where, where's your property there?
My property is actually off of this road that they're wanting to cut out, um, it's, my property, the front side of my property is on Bexar Avenue. The side of my property is on this.
Your other property.
Your, your other property, where is that?
My other property is on the backside of Ray Thompson subdivision. So instead of being able to.
So it's not connected to that road going?
It's two separate?
No, it's two separate properties. For what I'm saying, I would have to come out to the main road and come across and go back up to my property, if they shut this road off, I would. I would have to go around.
It was just a few minutes ago.
Scott.
So his house is over here?
Right there.
Oh, this is in, oh, this is in the circle, this is on this.
There's only one.
Is the street on the, on the, on this side or, or that side of your house?
The street is on the left, um, so, way right here.
Okay, so it's on the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so his one, that's one.
Rhythm's up here, right?
Attorney, sir. Yes. Let's just put it all.
This is where the car lot, this is where the car lot was. Right here, okay. And the house is on this side of the.
Is it so?
I tried to get it, I tried to get it on commercial, but.
They sell it to one of the Chinese.
So do you live there?
Mike, have you done any work out there on that road? Scott, would it be okay to, I've got some council members' life to this, to think about this, this is kinda due to all of us. I knew you were working on it, but it, I actually hadn't saw it in the public room.
Yeah, it's public community, so.
I don't know what's due.
I'm making a motion, we type it to make the meeting. So. That motion, the land is second, right, table, action on this particular road till next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Ma'am, I, I, I'm sorry, since this is a hearing, I may have missed it, the gentleman's name, I don't know if it was ever.
Joe Compton. Joe Compton.
Joey, Joey Compton?
Yes, it is.
From Hamilton?
Yes, I, I was not noticed, notified, I just, actually. That straight thing, do you say? Sound circle is what we're going on, but.
Leading the council, I'm asked to talk to you about City Hall's line. Did you get a chance to look at the plans, or are you? They all good?
Yeah, I'm trying to go and put in the last tray.
The same thing probably was in your tray.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Um, I thought you might be interested to know the areas of work in the City Hall, and these are defined on the first drawing. Areas of work with the.
Yeah, but it doesn't have.
Wait a minute, no, that's flush.
It's behind it, and it's like, are you gonna go?
I got.
You got it? And I thought I would just walk you through and kinda let you know what's going on.
Okay.
On the first floor of, um, City Hall, we will be working in area A1 to provide the payment counter with pass-through for, um, Water Department cable, and this will include a window with just a transaction slot where there'll be glass. It won't be open air, it will be enclosed, it'll be behind a glass wall. And on area B2 is adding a handrail at the existing ramp. It's required, area C1, B, B1, C1 is, um, we're gonna have to rework the fire, um, escape, the stairwell there with, uh, more fire rating on these, um, doors, both upper and lower, so that's what the C1 area is on both the first and the two area on the second floor. D1 is the widening of the two openings under the monumental staircase to meet ADA, um, requirements, and we've done a little investigation, and we're gonna only have to demo on one side of each opening. So that will be, um, a positive there, there won't be as much demolition as we once thought. On the second floor, uh, you can see area A2 is where the council desk will be in the meeting room. And that shows the, uh, opening in the floor that will be enclosed with the floor structure. And then where you see the teller line, it's actually a lone, um, line upstairs, and the bank will become where the council desk sits. On B2 is also what I said, the completion of the stairwell work there. C2 is, and the clerk's office will remove an existing wall to give the clerk's office a little more room for, um, people to meet with her and also for files. The, um, D2 is an additional drinking fountain there. And E2 is showing the area of the existing handrail around the other opening in the floor. And that does not need code, it's, um, has to, it will become just a solid low wall at forty-two inches height, it's too low, and it's not strong enough right now, so it has to be strengthened and it will be solid, so it'll be safer.
What you do is take those spindles out, put a wall up forty-two inches, probably count like this.
That's right.
She rock on each side.
Right.
Will it still be open?
It'll still be open, and the, and the skylights.
You just will have this.
And how high would it be?
Forty-two inches. That's guard rail height.
Okay.
And then area F2 is in the assistant to the mayor's office and the, um, mayor's office. The two doorways, um, will need to be, uh, well, actually, the door will be placed in the existing window in the assistant's office, and the door to the, um, mayor's area will be widened. And there's an existing column there where they took a wall out from the bedroom, and it will need to move five feet over, so that you'll have a turning area in there.
So both those columns will stay there? Now, this is a. That one, I know who you're talking about, but on the other side?
No, those columns will come out as.
Oh, that will come out, okay.
They're not, not load bearing. But this one in the historic column is load bearing, but it can be moved, um, the structural engineers looked at that, and it can move three to four feet and still provide the structure needed. So it will get out of the way of the entrance into the mayor's office. So that's the, the demolition part, and then the second floor plan shows where all of the offices will be located. And you can kind of begin to see, um, where everything's gonna go from your existing offices into the new. And, uh, just basically to summarize what functions will be in the City Hall. On the first floor, you will enter, uh, either entrance on either side, and you can pay your water bill or your cable bill. Their offices and supporting offices will be on the first floor. Then the front area, the historic home, will have several rooms that can be rented by the public for small meetings. And have been, some of the items from those rooms have been donated back by the family that lived there and, and have, they've offered to allow us to use those if we would like there. Upstairs, you will have the mayor's office, reception to the mayor's office, a waiting for the conference room, a large conference room with a seating for twelve, and, uh, a break slash workroom area. There's the, uh, needed restrooms on both levels, and where the walls are coming out in the teller area on the second floor will be the council desk and meeting room for thirty to thirty-five people. The clerk's office will need a storage area for files, and all of that will be located on the right side of the council meeting room. She'll also have enough room for waiting there. On the left side of the council room, you'll have the archives, which I believe you all call the green room, storage. And so that had to have a place to find home, and that's where that will be. Now, the area in the very back of the meeting hall, or the meeting room, to the left, is gonna be the mailroom, and that will be used by everyone who needs to use the postage machine. And, uh, it will also be where the council will pick up their letters and, and information in their trays before meetings. It's a quick run through. Any questions?
Are you any closer to?
We have, uh, finishes are pretty, pretty well decided, everything's pretty, pretty much decided. It's more or less in the working drawing state where it's being dimensioned and finalized, and I'm hoping in the next year to decide on if the entrance. They'll have that walk-on carpet, it's a lot like the mats you see at, um, businesses that has a rough texture. And it'll, it'll take the dirt off, and then the two entries.
Is that something that we located?
I mean, we did, I had samples of it.
Okay.
And there will be a, a hard surface in the historic first floor area. And, and some in the second floor, and there'll be a, um.
Now, did you say that the doors on either side will be automated?
No, 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 they'll be.
But.
One, one can be automatic on this, um, the ramp side, that's the automatic. They can be adjusted.
Okay.
And to, to me.
Yeah, the closures can be adjusted, so they're not so hard to open.
At the length.
Cause they are pretty, pretty stout sound, yeah. But you, you'll have an entrance on both sides, parking on both sides.
Yeah. And, I understood, you would come up the ramp and then hit the automatic opener for just that side.
Everything will be up to code, handicap accessible.
As far as, yes, sir.
You make sure.
Code compliant.
Code compliant, through everything.
Restrooms and.
What you were basically asking tonight, Andrew, is to get permission to put this in, get your bid package in the paper, so we can advertise for bids. Takes about four weeks, advertise for bids. Once the bids come in, then we make decisions based on what cost, if it fits, then, that's what you're asking for on the City Hall.
That's right.
I'm making a motion to allow Andrew to pursue the bid process.
But this can include, like, the outside of the landscape, and then, we haven't gotten to that.
The base did, but just included interior improvements and, and everything just on the building.
We've already rewarded it on the paint and exterior, and it sends weather breaks. We haven't really been pushing because it's just, whether it has been fit, and they still, by the time we get everything done, they'll, they'll have it done there. Matter of fact, they may start in next couple of weeks.
Oh, you have time limit on this, Andrew? When we bid there, celebrity?
We need to have so many days of construction possibly now?
I haven't said one yet.
Can you put that in there?
You think it's?
I will put that in.
Six or eight weeks possibly?
I would say sixty, six or eight weeks. And my motion also.
Okay, yeah.
I haven't made that decision.
Okay. Well, Lynn's made a motion, and Francis has made a second to go ahead and pursue the bid process, and then hopefully a few weeks we'll know what kind of bids we get. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Andrew, I know you've worked extremely hard for several weeks to get to this point, it looks really good, and I'm proud of what you've done. And hopefully the bids, when we get the bids in, in a month or so, it'll be good. We won't know until we get them, but we, we hope. There's not really a lot of demolition, a lot of, a lot of new construction, it's some remodeling, uh, you know, new floor covering, painting, stuff like that, but hopefully they'll come in, cause it's not really moving a lot of walls and stuff, except for the, the end where the Water Department cable company will be remodeling by some, and some the same way upstairs, but there's really not a lot of new construction.
The wall, the base wall, or the teller wall, is really withdrawing, we're looking at how much we can save on that and just modify the top of it, and get it the right heights, so.
In all of the, the original part of the house, there's really nothing doing there new, except for paint, and maybe some light fixtures later.
Did you?
The lighting.
Does some of that stay in, in some of it?
The LED updates could be, I'm thinking we will need to do it as an additive alternate, whereas they'll, to update all your lighting that's fluorescent to LED, that would be a, a, an item that you could then add or, or not do and do it at a later time.
And we've had all of our heating and cooling unit service, um, serviced, they're ready to go. Eventually, some may need to be replaced in a few years, cause we're about nine, ten years. That's something we can do as needed, not if there anything pushing on that. What else, Andrew? Okay, I think we've covered that pretty good. Alright, let's go ahead and go into the, um, second. We did, we both, did we both? Okay. Yeah, we've had to move around some, that's just getting confusing, but we're winding down now. Now I'd like to turn over the next proposal for our guest, and, do you have something on shows before we get started, Andrew, or you want to go ahead and talk?
Um, I'm not sure, Andrew, would you like me to show the, the PowerPoint first, or?
Do we need to pull that back down for you?
No, I'm gonna do it on the television, I'm sorry, we had some trouble with the. I'm sorry, we had some trouble with the, uh, the-
Thank you, Laura, for coming back up.
I don't know. Well, thank you, Patty, except I said, let them have it. I don't have to turn my TV on.
Here we go. All right. First of all, thank you so much for having me back. And I've just prepared a few slides that show, um, the playground improvements that Andrew and I had planned. The first part covers the lower playground that's existing. Andrew and I kind of did an assessment of the playground. There were a number of pieces that are outdated and, and some of them are dangerous and just need to be replaced. So we selected different pieces that we felt like, number one, would be inclusive and would allow children of any ability to play. One of the number one things to change to make that happen is to replace the T-gravel with something that is considered accessible in the playground world. And the, the best option that we could come in, come up with was to do wood fiber mulch there. And that is ADA approved and it is accessible if you're on a wheelchair or if you have some kind of mobility device. So, all that said, we'll start, go ahead and start. This is your existing playground. I kind of took that on Google Earth. And some of the pieces that would be changed is this, this piece ever be eliminated. I think that and the zip cruise is no longer functional. Merry go around, piston outdated, uh, and it's, it's just, it's time to work to replace. This V structure would remain. Uh, it's still in pretty good shape and swings in the background would stay as well. Uh, this toddler structure has some, it's just kind of lived its life. So our plan would be to remove this, this, these pieces here and that over here. The swings and the V structure would remain. Uh, and these are the pieces that would replace it. The long one on the end is called a zip cruise. And, um, I have a video clip that, um, the council saw the last time I was here and I'm happy to show that again. That particular piece is not going to be ADA, but it sort of replaces some of the other exciting pieces for the kids who are fully able. Uh, the spinner over here, we've replaced the current merry-go-round and it is accessible by a wheelchair. It has, um, it's at wheelchair transfer height and it has back support for kids that need that. Uh, it's for ages two to 12. Uh, it's not going to hurt it if an adult gets in it. So it's something that is really fun for anybody of any ability. I even went to a park one night where we had installed one and there was an adult in a wheelchair. And the back support was just at the right height where she could push her grandchildren in. So this is something that, um, of all ages and all abilities, I mean, you can enjoy the park and hopefully that these pieces will do that. Uh, this would be the new two to five structure and I'll show you, um, a better picture of that in just a moment. We added an accessible swing and a toddler swing, a climbing structure for the bigger kids. And then this sort of round swing, see with the round bars, is also something that is wheelchair transferable. So we've added a couple of pieces here that are for kids of, of different, you know, of, and that's again inclusive, so it's for kids of any ability. And then we just have a few spring riders and ground level saddle spinners and things like that over here. Does anybody have questions about that or would you like me to just go ahead? Um, it's a quick video of, sort of so you can see flyby of all the pieces that we put in here. And I wish I could have added the existing pieces so that that kind of gives you an idea of how it'd be set up.
If you were to do just a little at a time and add a piece or two every year?
That's entirely possible.
That's impossible.
One of the beauties of using the wood fiber mulch is that, um, that you can just rake it away and dig right into the earth and do a, and bury that piece there and put it in concrete and cover it back up. So yes, that's a very, uh, this is a really easy way to do this in phases. Okay, this is a little two to five structure and it has 14 activities on it. And it, it's small and compact, but it's for developed milk. It's, uh, thanks for children. It is power packed with all kinds of fun things. It even has this little track around the top. It's for, um, hot wheels. So you have tubes, you have a slide, you have numbers. It has, uh, puzzles and different things like that, but it's a really great piece for the younger kids to, to play on. And this is just a quick video of it as well, so you can kind of see what it looks like built. And, and of course the colors, you know, y'all can choose your own colors and we'll, we'll work on that.
Is this what we get help putting together?
Yes, what you get help putting together. All of these pieces, um, we, when we were working the budget, we, Andrea said that the community would be happy to step in and help do that. We have a supervisor who is, who is naturally certified playground installer. And he would, he does community builds all the time. Probably at least half of the playgrounds that I've installed, sometimes they do a professional build, but very often the community steps in. He organizes everything. He digs all the holes where they need to be and then he organizes your group and your crew. Make sure safety is number one. We don't want anybody to get hurt. Uh, and then he checks everything to make sure that it is, um, installed to the manufacturer's specifications and to the, um, national standards. These are just little pictures of all the little pieces on there, but I think the video probably showed it as well, but those are all the different components. Uh, this is just a little, another picture up close of the, um, the omni spinner. See if you can see this little girl. Uh, she has some, uh, mobility, but she does have to use a wheelchair and she can scoot right from it into, um, into the omni spinner. And you see the kids of any ability or just running around and having a ball. So it's something where kids can play side by side regardless of what, what their ability is. It's a bottle rider, it's just a spring rider and, um, it's super heavy duty. I selected that one because it, because of its durability. Uh, we have some that are strictly for ages two to five, but this one is really heavy duty enough for an adult to get on. So it doesn't matter if big kids go out to the park, they're not going to hurt it.
What foundation is that?
Uh, over here with the red?
Oh, that was above.
Okay, those are both poured in place. It's, it's a rubber unitary surface so that it has a, um, it has shredded rubber underneath it and then it has a wearing cap on top. Andrew, I looked at that as a possibility for the upper playground, but I'll get to it in a minute. The area of your playground is so large that it would cost quite a bit of money to go in and install that kind of surface there. It is the best surface for, um, making something accessible for somebody in a wheelchair. Uh, but statistically, I mean, I don't know your population here, but sort of the national averages, um, disabilities of, of that spectrum, 1% of the children that have a disability are actually in a wheelchair. So to try to gear your playground strictly to that 1%, um, doesn't really seem like the best use of, of the money when there are lots of other opportunities for kids. Let's say, I mean, you may have hearing impaired, they may have autism, uh, they may be blind. You have all different kinds of, um, things that are going on.
Well, how's a wheelchair going to do on that?
On mulch?
Mulch?
It is, uh, once it's tamped down and all that kind of stuff, it is transferred and it's approved, um, by IPMA, which is a third-party, um, company that approves various playground equipment pieces as to whether they're ADA or, or whatever. And that, um, that certain, uh, wood fiber mulch is considered wheelchair accessible.
Tim, I have seen playgrounds where they have certain small areas with the solid surface and then the rest is mulch. Like you would have a trail to an item or something where it would be a solid-
Like it takes some more than that.
Well, and, and that's a possibility and it could be done after the fact. If you want to go ahead and get some pieces installed, if it becomes an issue, we could come in. You'd have to, you know, put in crushed stone and then top it with the, with the new surface. But you can easily make a, a pathway into an existing area so that you have access to, let's say, the swing, the accessible swing or the omni spinner if you want to do that. So you've got a way to get to that, that piece. And that's, that's a good question. It's a, you know, uh, it, it's all just about money really when you get ready to do that. So these are just some close-up pictures of a saddle spinner. Kids of all abilities don't, I mean, kids with autism really like to spin, but, uh, something that, uh, sort of you might not know is that, uh, your brain, uh, when you spin when you're a child, it helps you learn to track, your eyes track. And there's lots of, um, things that happen in your brain that are developmentally appropriate for you in spinning. So, uh, I like to include different spinning pieces on playground. Uh, this is just a close-up picture of the doodle swing. Um, this is something that, you know, you can get a group of kids on, so it's a social piece. It's about social emotional learning. Uh, and then this is a freestanding climber that we just wanted to add something and where kids could really get a climbing climb. Add something else for the bigger kids. Uh, we did add one new swing set and it has one of the toddler seats and it has one, um, full bucket seat with a harness. The harness on, all right, first of all, that seat, you see how that sort of swamps that little girl, but it, she's still secure in there. Um, but the harness itself is made of stainless, the hook is made of stainless steel and it works like a champ for many, many years. It's extremely durable. Also that seat is large enough for an adult to get in. So if you have, um, again, if you have kids that are going out there that are playing and roughhousing or whatever, they want to get in that swing, it's not going to hurt it. You don't have to worry about, you know, somebody that's too big getting in it and breaking the swing. Uh, this is probably going to be the thing that the kids will love the most. It's a zip cruise, zip line that is intended to be ridden on flat ground. It slopes on both ends so they get on a, on a deck, they jump onto the rep swing and slide to the other end. It gets their momentum going this way and then slows it down at the other end. But you can have kids taking turns from either end so they can ride and hand it off and back and forth where you can, you know, they're going to figure out something fun to do with it. So, um, I have the video again? Would y'all like to see it? If the mayor, do you want me to shut this again or not?
Sure.
Okay. I have the sound on this.
It's been a long deal.
Now, the one that we did, I'll put on this design, it does not have the harness swing. That's it. But you can add that bag at a later date if you want to. You can also kind of see from this video that they're really, the kids are really not that high off the ground. So even if they were, I, I can't imagine they would fall off of it, but if somebody did, they're really just a couple of feet off the ground.
They sometimes align two, two rails and have one assisted bucket seat with one regular. But sometimes that they, or have others on the playground.
Okay. So, um, the budget that, uh, Andrew and I built for this would be that we'd spend about fifty thousand on the equipment. And again, if that's something that you want to add one piece at a time or something, then that's fine. The mulch to redo the whole area is about twenty thousand dollars. Um, the, my supervisor that would come and, and assist with, with the process, his minimum fee is fifteen hundred. Part of, the reason I put a range there is because there's, first of all, a lot of equipment. I don't know how many days it would take to do it. Part of that is how many people come to help. Part of that is also how much you want him to help. So if he just comes and he strictly supervises and sit, and helps dig the holes, then he's really just going to be telling, uh, your volunteers what to do and he's going to check behind them. But if he's actually going to get out there and work and help, uh, quite a bit, then we're going to pay him a little bit more. The concrete for the whole area to make, make, um, access from the parking lot, Andrew, that's your number? Do you have anything you want to add with that?
That's pretty much what's shown in the plan that I had given to get, you know, entrance to the park from the parking places.
And then these numbers don't really include any fencing. Um, and we talked about, you know, picnic cover and that number's not included in there. So the budget to do all the pieces that you saw, including mulch, would be around seventy-five dollars.
You keep talking about this man coming in this and that, and if he don't get the bid, he, I don't understand.
He doesn't get the bid?
I mean, if this company don't get the bid here to do this, if another company gets it, what?
Uh, they all do community build. Andrew, do you want us to pick it up?
You purchase the equipment under a state contract.
It's a double state contract?
You purchase it, the equipment that way.
Yeah, that's the first time I heard that.
Then you just, um, use community labor to install it. Now, the groundwork, the, the concrete, the parking, any additional work other than just the playground and the equipment and the mulch would be something that we would put out to bid or take works on, according to how much bids, whether or not it goes out to state bid or local bids.
And these numbers actually reflect, there's a built-in 6% discount with the, the fine contract, so that is built into it.
And we provided, um, information on Kaboom grants that you can apply for. Do you want to tell them a little more about that or?
Um, I'd be happy to. Kaboom is a, is not, I, I don't work for Kaboom, but we are, our, my playground company is an approved vendor with Kaboom. And they're a nonprofit that provides playground, they, their primary goal is to have a neighborhood park within walking distance of every child in America. That's, that's their, um, that's their goal. So they provide grants, uh, rally grants all year. Uh, I don't know how many they do, but I have done a bunch of them. Uh, and what happens is, let's just say Andrea applies for this Kaboom grant, the majority of them are for, for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, with that fifteen thousand dollars, you have to match, um, I think up to, let's see, uh, nine thousand, I believe is what it is. Anyway, that money has to be spent on playground equipment. It doesn't include freight and it doesn't include the servicing, um, or the supervisor. So typically if you do a Kaboom grant, it's going to be about thirty, thirty thousand dollar project, but you can add more to it as well. They're pretty easy to get. I've given Andrea all the literature that she would need, but, um, once you got it, we are an approved vendor for Kaboom and, uh, and you can use that for us. Part of the money from Kaboom comes, the fifteen thousand dollars, nine comes from Kaboom. My company, uh, Playscapes, would provide three and then Landscape Structures, who manufactures my equipment, also provides three. Any questions? Okay. We also have worked on the nature trail park. And this is the playground that we've, um, developed for that, um, the upper park. And we developed this little, it's just a small structure that we wanted to sort of fit into the nature theme up there. This particular piece right here, I'll show you a close-up, close-up of it in a moment. It's made of, um, GFRC, which is glass powder reinforced concrete. Landscape Structures, uh, who manufactures the equipment, has their own concrete plant. Um, they, they make absolutely beautiful pieces with it. That's like the, uh, the branches of this tree are actually holding up, um, for the playground structure. It has a built-in talk to in it and has a puzzle thing on it and has a little squirrel that's hand painted in it. It's really, really beautiful piece and, uh, and a lot of fun. The kids get the whole feel of being in a, in a treehouse. There's kind of the backside of it, so we've got a big tube slide so nobody's going to, you know, be falling out of the tower. And, um, added a couple of independent pieces as well. This is a cozy dome. Kids really love it and see, adults can see in it, so, you know, that's nice. But then they can climb on it and climb in it and all that sort of thing. Now, this rendering shows a, a unitary surface, unitary rubber surface, but we ended up sort of saying back that, back that out instead of, we don't really think that's in the budget right now. So as shown, we would probably, probably not do that type of surface, but, um, we're looking at doing wood fiber mulch up here as well. We developed it so that we could take off a panel, uh, and then extend the playground out a little bit so there's room on that pad. Uh, it would be set so that we have room for expansion and all of the used stones are still going to be met on that area. So we added another slide, um, a little wiggly ladder. So we added another slide, a little widdle ladder and the piece that was here where this is coming out would be moved it was either bad or oh it's a little balcony deck and we put it on the other side so you continue to use the pieces that were here and add them on to this this lower structure. In keeping with the nature theme we had this we made new panels that are sort of nature inspired and that's something that you could personalize you could have one of your local artists do the graphics and we could put a panel like that on the bottom of it and that's really just for thinking about what would look beautiful on here and personalize it for your community. Here's a flyby so you can kind of see all around it. So you can see the tree all the way under it and then these are log steps those are also made from GFRC and they're just they're really lovely and they're the kids really like them because they really feel like they're out in the woods. Here's kind of a close-up so you can see that's a close-up photo of the it's called the Discovery Tree Line but underneath there's a little squirrel there and it's got a little raccoon face painted into it and this is a talk tube where there's another they can talk into that tube and they hear coming out on another tube somewhere else on the Actually I just realized this is not on there we took that off we have just the regular steps on there so. But there's the tree stumps you can kind of see close-up how many logs and then that little balcony deck is on the second phase and that's on the first phase as well. It's called the cozy dome and you can get it in all different colors you know we were trying to stick to the natural look on the way. And here are just some pictures of different community builds and that's kind of how it goes you start just digging holes in the ground and then you lay out all the equipment and the next thing you know you've got the whole thing built. It's really a lot of fun, really gets the community involved, you know there's all different kinds of ways to help. You're gonna have some people who are really the you know team leaders and the construction guys and then other people you know you're gonna have maybe have music and food and you know whatever but you make a real day of it and it's a it's a really it's a fun time. So last look splash pad we have two options this was option one and the reason you see this other space that would be where the playground is. So these are gonna be kind of side by side. There's a wall here kind of to separate the two and help keep the mulch from making its way over to the splash pad. So that is phase one lots of geysers and sprays and things like that. There's an area some of these little smaller bubblers are for the littler kids so they don't want to get splashed in those bigger sprays. Kind of a top view of it. And then this would be a phase two option. Andrea asked if we could put some bigger pieces out there and how much it would cost to add some you know like the mushroom thing and the little flower that coils around and the dump bucket. So it changes the look quite a bit makes it look like a little bit more fun. So the whole budget for phase one as you saw it there is about two hundred fifty-two thousand. So this is just your overall budget for the whole park Andrea this probably is your slide.
Go ahead and read it and then I'll take it.
Okay, okay so the playground equipment and mulch for the upper playground is about fifty-five thousand. She added in concrete seventy-four asphalt for parking lot ninety thousand so all in all this turn you know the total budget for the upper playground area is about eight hundred thousand seventy-five to eight hundred seven seventy-five to eight hundred thousand.
Those were the numbers I presented last.
Did you make any questions about the playground which watchman can answer?
No.
I'm on the conference. Well, thank you so much everyone for having me here.
Switching to Spain in our country.
Andrea, anything you want to add?
No, I just wanna say there are any other questions?
What's the time frame if we have this going about the beginning of summer? We need to act pretty quick, don't we?
The playground aspects they are what is your time for bring light to completion?
Once the playground equipment is ordered is manufactured to your specifications for the colors and all that sort of thing in two to three weeks so it would be here likely they would manufacture it in two weeks and it would be here in the third week. And then the installation you know we would want to do that and you know with and have it delivered when you have your community organized to put it in. So that part of that depends on you but it can actually be manufactured and arrive in Hamilton in about three weeks.
As far as the splash pad that's where we need a little more lead time to get those drawings. The company part will do the diagrams and the construction drawings for the actual splash pad and the cannibal room and all of the piping has to be sized. Once all of the items are decided on the splash pad then they go into design and they produce their documents that are then bid to be built and then I would do drawings for the concession or the pavilions of picnic tables, the layout of the parking and the site work. So that together would be you know it needs to be pretty quick if you're wanting to use it first of the summer to be decided on so all those drawings can get in the process and the work when you take the topo of the site and the grading elevation and that sort of thing.
Their process is probably about three months versus the three weeks and then installation of that there's a lot more involved with putting in splash pads so it really would take every bit of four months.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal.
Now which playgrounds?
Splash pad project, yes.
When you say just.
Everything at that side.
Everything at splash pad project not the lower playground.
We can add it in our traditional zones or I like it how we should be doing it.
I don't see where we need two playgrounds to say. Just get that with a loan where we've already got up the code where people can use it. It must come out in paper did it?
The.
About this?
About the yeah playground project and all that.
But I've had several calls and had some today. I found out today we got people in town that live at city limits don't have city water. I knocked front in I was allowed to pick up while the go come here pot hole we need to be spending money.
That's usually our this money when it was borrowed was for specific projects.
I know this money shouldn't have been borrowed because it was gonna do something.
You voted against it.
Correct, yeah I voted against it. Yeah, that's why.
So we couldn't do that?
We got we got.
If everybody voted against it we wouldn't be able to do the downtown revitalization or any other project.
That's been kind of about a building or a community building. I hadn't seen anything like that.
There's still gonna be pretty much a community multipurpose building. This was done for these projects that's what the money was for?
It was for over to Rex at Musselware.
And you don't take care of that too?
To do something over there.
Oh, we will.
We're in the process of working on that trying to get.
What's going on there?
That's where we could put a multipurpose building instantly.
Well, I mean we had to pay you know all of that to A.D.L. to all of that. They have to move and all that asbestos. I think there's plenty of children in this town that are accommodating.
I think it's a way of investing back in our community to give our kids something to do. We've heard for years and years and years we don't have swimming pool or anything else. This is something they can do it'll cost the kids nothing to go. It'd be where we can rent it out for parties. It'll you know it'll far as maintaining it that splash pad will pay for maintaining anything we need to do but just a way of giving back and investing our.
I'm just afraid you're gonna get some kid run over going back and forth from those little ball fields down there crossing that road because they drive through there like crazy and they gonna be crossing that road coming up there.
I think that can be monitored with the way this has got the parking drawed out to keep that from happening.
That's where there's plug their into locations so you don't have to cross that road.
Yeah, but splash pad is not gonna be there little folks is gonna be playing ball down at the bottom they use that playground. How far fixing that end up in the bottom and make it ADA accessible? Those parents that's got kids that's in a wheelchair they need before they can go play.
I thought that was one of the main reasons we bought the Hostel property to develop that get some more parking which we don't have enough is that right Barry?
Parking is my thing. I've got the needed parking.
And I mean I think I'm for it I mean I'll second Lynn's motion I'm good with it I think it's past time that kids around here have had something to do. I mean that's what's wrong with this place a lot of people around here don't want to see nothing change they don't want to see nothing grow it's been like that for forty years.
Same with that.
A million dollars that's a lot of money.
It is. You're taking into account the list.
You borrowed the money to spend it so spend it.
Yeah, we need to spend it on something besides that.
It's not for infrastructure. Your infrastructure comes out of the tanks.
We gonna try to figure your problem over there we got any money left.
Yeah, no it's not used for infrastructure.
We gonna try to keep it flooded out over there.
We got a motion to accept.
I'm sorry I sound like I'm.
It's the motion that he might.
Both on both proposals.
Both.
Then at the bottom and up top everything.
Playground and splash pad.
Everything.
Okay, that was that was my question I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion? I'm favorable I'm accepting both proposals. Say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry but.
There's some things we need to do in exactly this session. A couple of personnel issues that's very important that we can talk about tonight before we leave.
Let's see if Ms. Blueston's got anything water situation up there in Carolins area.
Well, I'd just like to know if you've made any progress to get anybody lined up like Corps of Engineers or someone like that.
I've left messages with Corps of Engineers also last week when FEMA was here about their public hearing about us applying for applications for our help. They're in I've been in contact with them the last I talked to them Friday left a message again for them today to see if there's any kind of assistance for this particular type problem. And you and I know we've got that problem I rode with you all the way to Mill Creek all the way down to your house and down to Carolins and I'm very aware of that creek and it overflowed and flooded and I also got Lynn may have some insight with Mike Shaw and County Engineers Office there may be others.
N R C S used to have.
N R C S problems. So I'm not trying to ignore you and I know that you've got a problem we have flash flooding I realize that and I try not to put it off and act like I don't care because I do care. If I lived next to that creek I'd be concerned too.
Do you all have flood insurance?
Can't get it.
We could probably get it but all of us are on the fixed.
Well, if you can afford to pay for it, yeah. It's in a flood zone same thing. That's a flood zone.
But the thing of it is the creek is so filled in it's going to worse and worse.
It's ways deeper with sand and ground.
I'm asking if there's any help dredging that's what I sent last weekend today and hope I get a response.
If it was dredged banks cleaned off the word of nature wouldn't fill into it and if it was all dredged out and everything the dam tore out and all that where the creek could have a free flow we wouldn't have no flood.
Did it help when they when we did it before back ninety-two or whenever it was?
It helped it helped carry the water but the flood it didn't help the flood in any.
State never did clean out under forty-three bridge.
They attempted they attempted they put a piece of equipment in there and they marred up and throwed a track and they got a heavy duty crane to lift it up and put it back on their trailer that they brought it there on they left and that's it. They didn't make the first scoop to clean out.
And the State Highway Department has agreed to help.
That was fifteen years ago.
Clean out from under the bridge if the city could get help with it.
Well, the state said they.
There's areas all over I mean I don't know.
The state said they.
Where responsibility lies with the city or how much the homeowner has to keep it cleaned up to the water you know because it's undergrowth all the way around the both sides of the bank. How much that belongs to the homeowner to keep that cleaned up to the creek bank? How much is the city's responsibility to keep the you know the creek dredged? It's a lot of complications and you know nobody can control six, eight, ten inches of rain that's why it happened. It doesn't happen every month or every six months but it does seem to happen it's happened twice since we've been in office sometimes I've been there twice to see it just in the last three years.
In ninety when it flooded real bad then we dredged and after that we dredged it and we've had another flood since then before this last one. We lost two feet of property on our side. This this time we lost at least four maybe five if I had it surveyed all total we've probably lost six feet of property.
From the flood.
From the flood.
How far back up did we go past your house the last time?
All the way to the Lindsey Wash Ho. You know where the Lindsey Wash Ho is at?
It's around Rafer Council's property.
Oh, well Dr. Kerr at the time only.
Yeah, I know where I know where you're talking about.
It's on the hill. It's called Lindsey Wash Ho.
Dr. Kerr didn't he he asked me to go up the creek and show him where it was at and he said he didn't want him on his property with and there's a big, big rock or there in sight.
Well, as soon as I get information I try to use every contact I can and if anybody else can help me that's fine I'm willing to pursue any avenue that we can to see if there is any assistance available or cost estimates or anything like that.
But see the last time the well the first and last time it was dredged the first time it was dredged the city got blocked about straightening that creek out you know it's like a dog's hind leg going down through that. And the people that own the property said no you can't cross my property you know and straightening the creek out. So they stopped at the bridge there at Academy Drive they stopped at the bridge there from Lindsey Wash Ho is what they. They, they stopped at the bridge there from the Lindsay Wash Ho is what they dredged. But the intentions was, while the city was at it and had a man that would do it, he'd go all the way to forty-three bridge and said, while, while we're dredging it and cleaning it out, straighten it out and all that. So the city went to the people that own the property and they said, no, you're not crossing my property. So you could condemn it.
That's a problem, man.
It's a health hazard. It's a health hazard and it's a mosquito den. It won't quit. You can't get out after dark. You can't. When the sun goes down, you can't get outside. Mosquitoes are covering you. I know you, I know you drive through with your smoke truck and all of that, put-out stuff, but that, that helps, but it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate.
Do you all look at the drainage problems up here?
Which one?
That thing, this is the house that flooded. So we all looked at all those too.
Yes, I've got, I'm getting estimate on, there's a drains that runs behind Betty Ryan's and it runs right behind our house all the year. I'm getting an estimate on that. We're going to have some people look at it and measure it. I should have something, but next people. Mike's aware of it.
I think this time really did a lot more damage because it has filled in so much more in that creek and it can't get out fast enough till it backs up on us. And Ms. McLean left her home right at Christensen and has not come back. And her house was, it's still standing, but it's destroyed.
Right.
And it's caused an age, it cost them a lot, you know, to have us and the neighbors across the creek. They never had to walk over there, so we have a lot in our hands.
I want to thank Barry Kerr for coming. I'm not going to put him in a spot, but we did meet with Andrea and the rent board a couple of times and went over every bit of this a few weeks ago, probably. In the last six, eight weeks, I know we've met twice. You know, though he managed to support all these projects and I appreciate that. We do need to go executive session, so at this time, I need a motion to go executive session. Who said? All in favor, C.I. And I don't know how long it's going to be going. We've got two things to discuss, so it could take a while.